Okay, so then we do have a quorum. We just don't have ready. That is fine. I will call the meeting to order. And I'll do a roll call of committee members to establish the forum. Frankie?
Frankie Boiser here.
So, sorry. Kairun, I actually needed to see, I'm packing for a trip and I completely forgot that we even had a meeting today. Are you still gonna have quorum if I can't stay in? Kairun, are you okay with representing us all for this meeting? I think it's pretty by the box, right, Susan? It's kind of a check the boxes meeting. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, and I'll see you all soon. I'm gonna go hectically try to pack.
Good luck, Nick. Okay, so we will reflect that Mick Meyer and Maggie Buckley are absent. Susan?
Susan Dominican here.
And Kairun. School verse. I will go ahead and read them. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands fill the house, so many hearts fill a school. And that takes us to 1.4 for audience to address the committee. There are no audience numbers here, but if there's anybody who would like to bring up something on the agenda. Being none, we'll go straight to 1.5, agenda modifications. Hearing none, we'll go into 1.6, the minutes from May 11.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from May 11.
Thank you, Frankie. Do you have a second?
I can second that.
Thank you, Susan. So we have Frankie with a motion, Susan with a second, and I'll call for the vote. Chelsea Parker, aye. Frankie?
Frankie Boiser, aye.
Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
Kairun comes aye.
Excellent. Us two. Item two, the financial reports. Jim?
Okay, we have the financial update for the month of May. Continued strong financial forecast. Current surplus model, 595,000 for the single year. Revenue, actually favorable compared to last time we reviewed, but pretty much operating at the same level. 448 above budget. If we remove kind of the changes in federal revenue, we're basically at budget real close. Expenses currently forecast below budget, 48,000. Obviously, based on just changes to the environment, how the expenses are utilized. And we continue to have, you know, revenue that could offset expenses. Although, when we go from this, I don't want to jump ahead, but when we go from this to budget, I think the most, the best goal for the school is to consider all that money that could be utilized in multiple years to stretch that in the next year and beyond. So, good expense favorability, and I would anticipate any funding, if we had more expenses, that that would be okay, and we would just take that revenue into next year and leave the expenses that were necessary this year. Good news on cash ending in the May at 397,000. Really good, we've been talking about getting to May and June and beyond. If we were going to dip below 200. So to get to the end of May, still strong, buys us a lot more time into June and July. This is really kind of budget related. I just made a note here, though, because throughout the year, when we've talked about the forecast, we've talked about it, our spending news, all the different funding sources that are available. Really, the goal is to push those forward into 21, 22, and beyond. So I thought it would help to summarize the magnitude now of what we're looking at in multi-year funding opportunities that really are going to be assumed. Someone looks at a school, they're gonna say, well, hey, didn't you get this money? You know, don't ask me for more money. So, the in-person instruction that was state funding awarded this year is in next year's budget at 88,000. The expanded learning opportunities, which is really driven towards summer school, and additional interventions and other learning supports, is 189,000. The one that we had this year that we talked about could be used this year or potentially moved, which the budget now assumes would be moved, was the first round of federal funding, was 80,000. And then the later awards were the second, and now the third round, which are multi-year. These two more years in the budget, the second round at 251,000, and the third year at 563,000. Key events right now, this is the meeting to have a hearing on the LCAP and the budget prior to approval in June. Then after that, a lot happening in June, obviously, right? We got to approve the LCAP and the budget and these grants planning. And then we get into just normal grant management at the end of June and in July. No notes on enrollment and ADA this year. Obviously, have a lot more attention paid to next. Revenue, as noted, pretty much all that noise and variance you see is either accounting for PPP forgiveness and then determining what year the funding will go, or reducing expectation for certain programs that were attended, that were in-person based. And then cutting, really cutting, this year, cutting fundraising expectations, although it was all easily absorbed. Learning loss funds were all fully utilized this year, and the multi-year 80,000 is assumed to move forward into next year's budget. Expenses still, you know, very positive in this environment, 48,000 favorable compared to the original budget. Just movement in categories based on the experiences in distance and then return in person. Perplus strong, near 595,000 would bring the fund balance to 1.1 million, about 32%. That's pretty good, about a third of the year. Note that, obviously, we don't have that much cash on hand, much lower, while the receivables are outstanding, but still very good news, because the authorizer will locate both the cash and the fund balance. And so having that really strong fund balance is good for the school and strengthens the budget looking at the next two years. Cash model, may declining from April, but still strong, right about at the budget. And then really comes down to timing now, which receivables will or will not be received by the end of June, which payables will come due by the end of June, but we're still continuing to forecast a solid number above 200,000. Our goal is definitely to be above 100. And so we're still forecasting over 200, and we have opportunity to beat that. So we feel good in this deferral environment. Near budget, strong cash. Compliance notes are mostly LCAP budget, and then a lot of check-ins, policy review and items like that for the school to have ready for next year, or compliance reminders for IRS compliance for the nonprofit. So, big picture, LCAP and budget. And then when we get to July, we get the grant reporting again for the new, or the end of the year before we start the new year. Have any questions about the May financial update?
I don't see any, Jim. Thank you. And good news, it's a good month. Susan, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that, you know, we had, last month in May, had our spring report to Chico Unified. And in that report, I didn't speak, but had presented the report. And one of the board members, longtime board members, asked finance if they had anyone. They were, they usually had concerns about finances. And there wasn't any report on concerns of finances. And to hear Kevin Baltimore say, we don't have anyone, any concerns about finances, was a very positive thing for Blue Oak. So, just wanted to share that. Our, our work is being noted.
But it's great news, Susan. That is a big change from past years.
Meeting?
Um, that was the Chico Unified Board meeting in mid-May.
Okay.
They do a spring report to, on the charters, all of the charters work with Chico Unified, and then that report goes to the board.
And I I saw the check register, but I didn't see the point-of-sale transactions.
That came in today, and I actually have it now, so I will. I can pull it up, or I can send it out to everyone, whatever would be easiest.
I'm comfortable just seeing it pulled up if everyone else is. But otherwise, we can review it and approve it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Really just, I think. I'm so glad that we were able to have graduations.
Yeah.
And is the question on this one up a little bit? The postal plus for $235, is that Q Records, Susan?
Yes.
Okay. I know usually this time of year, there is that, I just wanted to verify. And then can I see the bottom once again? And then lapel pin planet, is that a graduation purchase?
Yes, we purchased lapel pins, oakly, oaks, lapel pins for the high school graduates.
Oh, great. I know, we had talked about doing something like that in a previous meeting. So that's wonderful that we're able to let off. Excellent. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Did anybody else? It looked like there was really only about four actual point-of-sale purchases. Seeing you, but no, don't apologize. I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anyone. And Kairun, you one here are very tiny. And so I can't tell if you're
I was really concerned about those lapel pins.
Okay, so what's like then we've gone over 2.1.2 through 2.1.6? I guess 2.1.1 wasn't not much specific data this year. So if somebody would like to make a motion to recommend the charter council approve the financial reports, I wanted to know.
I will make a motion to recommend the charter council approve the financial reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Kairun. Do you have a second?
I will second. Frankie, well.
I'll put the vote, Chelsea, aye. Frankie?
Frankie Boiser, aye.
Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
Kairun comes aye.
All right, that takes us into item three, business. Susan, start us off. Susan, you are on the
I have these documents a little out.
We need, yeah, so let's put the budget first and the EPA agreement, and let Jim speak to those, if you will.
And real quick before Jim starts, is the EPA agreement considered part of the budget, Susan? Because I didn't see the EPA agreement on the agenda as its own thing.
It probably should be its own thing, but if we can look at it so that the board can approve it next month, then it'll be on time for for the June 30th deadline. It's one of those things that Jim said, oh, by the way, you need to do this. And so it didn't quite get on the agenda for this meeting.
Yeah, and that, that can run long, that can run late. It goes with the budget, so we often encourage it after the budget. But some schools, if they adopt their budget early, they don't adopt it until their, until their first meeting at the start of the new year.
Okay, so we could actually wait on the EPA until August, Jim?
Yeah, all it is, is, you know, the budget is, I'm just gonna round it to 2.6 LCFF. And of that, 525 is EPA. And so it's just saying that the board authorizing how to use the EPA components. So I presume that it would be used for teacher salaries.
Great, thanks, Jim.
And Jim, if it's for you to share the documents, you can definitely take over, just let me know.
Okay, sure, I can, I can do that. Okay, so we have the 21, 22 budget for, for review, built on an enrollment model of 290. And the big change right now, as I've mentioned in the May update, was the significant amount of supplemental funding available, both in state and federal. This assumes full use of the state funding in 21, 22, which is when it's targeted for. Some of that coming with, you know, additional costs related to additional learning time, is the intent of the funding. And then the federal funds on the second section is federal revenue. The last line on there says kind of the other, the non-recurring or the minor federal revenue. That's gone from the expectation of about $10,000 to hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so, you can see in 21, 22, the budget expectation, because you're receiving about 300,000 in additional state revenue, you would only have to use about 177 of the federal revenue, and they could stretch the remaining federal revenue into the following two years of the budget to ensure budget stability. Other than that, we're operating at May revise funding formula, which is very favorable. LCFF funding up from previous models, and like I said, 290 ADA. Odd comparison to 21, 22 because of the federal revenue that year also.
Okay. Susan, do we think that 290 is a safe prediction for enrollment in fall? Do we have a sense of what our actual numbers are going to be? I mean, I know that it's still early, but
It is still early. I, I went through pretty much class by class and looked at the numbers to come up with 290. And we're finding that, that families are still sort of saying, oh, yeah, we've decided to come back. So we're still sort of in a a flux period with that. But 290 feels safe, Chelsea. I think our actual enrollment number, when I did that, was like 286. So it felt like we're strong. We have a full kindergarten, starting to build a waiting list. Yeah, so things are, things are looking good for that number.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You can see in, in 21, 22, we have an increase of about 475,000 one-time funds in 20, in really a single year, but we're looking at the three-year model to ensure financial stability. 22, 23, about 450,000 additional funds, and then using 270, we have about 10,000 normally, 270 in the third year out. Utilizing those funds, the budget is able to absorb increased salary rates, as previously approved by the board, stabilize staffing, add the additional learning time for the expanded learning opportunities grant, which is part of the state money. You can see salaries increases from 2021 to 21, 22. Future years are just current, a flat number.
And quick question, as, probably for Susan, under the teachers' extra duty and stipends, it looks like the 21, 22 numbers have jumped. Do we have additional plans that are causing that?
Jim, I think we missed that. That should not be, that should be back down to the lower level, because the stipends are absorbed in the, the pay scale now, so.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's correct. That's stipends are moved, but we have, we have a placeholder for extra hours right now.
That's true.
Yeah, but absolutely correct. We moved the stipends, and, and right now, because teacher salaries right now is focusing on the annual salary, and extra time was still kind of a TBD number. Yeah, so we put it there, but it does jump out, like, why are we
Yes, why are we doing that? So that would be stipends, that would be additional stipends, actually, Chelsea, for the summer school program. It's not gonna be that high, but
And I think we have some, but
Yeah, yeah.
It seemed high when the out-years are much lower, so I just okay, no, that's great, that's great. I would rather it be projected too high than under projected any day, so.
Okay.
Materials, mostly, you know, solid number, mostly the changes because 2021 was a spike year, right? It was significant instructional material, as well as, you know, response material, building materials. So generally, books and supplies are pegged more towards a standing, standard operation. Subagreements, kind of the ongoing expectation for non, non-employee services, primarily special education. Facility costs, again, normal expectation. Obviously, 2021's a bit of an outlier with the unusual environment, and so we tried to set that back to a normal expectation. Rent continues, you know, at the existing rate. You could see the overall, you know, utilization of the available funding to stabilize the budget with the expanded, expanded roles and learning time in 21, 22, and then really trying to utilize the funds based on this level each year. Currently, the third year out, there's just not enough money at this level, but I believe the lease is up. You know, there's lease discussion by that time. But I wanted to leave that in as an illustration of how, at this level, it was taking about 450,000 supplemental dollars at this level.
Looks like there's a pretty big drop in IT. Is that because of switching contracts? Susan?
Yeah, and a lot of 2021 involved a lot of distance services. And so that, that may go back, that may, that may maintain, but we kept it out at this time. But a lot of that was service-related, additional services, providing connection for
I'm really happy to see that the additional dollars that are coming just enough to keep us slowed another year, that we're really able to disperse those and, and utilize them over the next few years to, you know, for things to be able to level out and get us to different places. And that's very exciting to see, to see our multi-year forecast looking so healthy. So thank you for your work. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Jim, do you have anything else to add that was bringing to our attention?
No, I think, you know, you could see, like we said, that future years are still, you know, preliminary. Significant amount of funding available to use to maintain the additional programs over these years, currently stabilizing the budget and stabilizing cash. And, and I think, and it does include expansions of the program, which was the goal of the school, which is also a goal of the funding. So I feel good about that, presenting that.
If there are no other questions, I'd love, this is, I have to say, this is probably the shortest and smoothest budget discussion that I've been a part of since being a part of this school. And I think that's such a testament to the, the health of our finances, that we're not having to, like, question every line, and could we squeeze an extra $100 out of this line to support that line? And just the fact that that we have a healthy budget and we're not upside down is very, very, very satisfying to see. We would like to make a motion to recommend the board adopts, approves this budget as presented.
I will make a motion to for the board, or to recommend, I make a motion to recommend the board approve the budget for the 2021, or 21, 22, 22 school year. Okay, that's a mouthful. I think I got there.
Do I have a second? Great, thanks, Kairun. Frankie, the motion, Kairun with a second. Open and call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Frankie?
Frankie Boiser, aye.
Kairun? Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
Right. Budget recommendations. Very exciting. All right, so that takes us to 3.2, the LCAP review.
Yes, and we decided to put the EPA on the next, but the next agenda, right?
Well, Susan, do you want to put the EPA on the next agenda? Or do you want to present it as part of the budget now? Well, Susan, do you want to put the EPA on the next agenda or do you want to present it as part of the budget now and then? And then vote on it at the next meeting? You're on mute.
I think we can just wait and put it on the next agenda. So it flows, it's fine, since it, since Jim tells us that we don't have to have it done by June 30th. I think that's fine.
Okay, then it's just to 3.2, the LCAP review.
So we have completed the LCAP documentation. You have looked at the goals previously, the goals and plans previously. What has been added? We put it actually in the final format this week and Jim was able to add the budget numbers to it. What is different this year from past years is that the full budget is included in the LCAP, whereas before we only did supplemental funds. This year they are asking that we move towards including everything in the budget. So you see the full amount, which I think is particularly helpful in that first piece, which is the parent report, so they can see all of what's going on. So that's the basic information, the, what we've done with Jim is if there's something like salaries, they're all pretty much, we did not say a certain percentage goes to this goal or that goal. It just refers that that budget number is in the in the LCAP previously. So that makes it a little simpler. We don't have to worry about somebody spending 30% of their time instead of 20% of their time in a certain area and try to move it around for that. So so those are just some of the numbers pieces that you'll see.
Well, with this being reversed here, we're having to improve the full budget and that our budget looks as good as it is. Good to show you. Does anybody have any questions on the LCAP? All right, now I will enter to recommend the board, please, the LCAP.
I will make a motion to recommend the board approve the LCAP. Is it LCAT?
LCAT.
LCAT with a P.
Cap, okay, LCAP.
Second, a motion to approve the local control of our accountability plan.
Thank you, Kyra, for this second. Frank with the motion, Kyra, the second, last chance for questions or comment. The I, Frankie?
Frankie, boys, right, I.
Susan Dominican, I.
Right. And that takes us to 3.3, the sustainable school task.
So I wanted to put, start to put this on the agenda item. We approved an addendum to the strategic plan recently, and part of that was the board has been, this, or this committee has been acting also as the sustainability task force. And that's some of the work we did on the payroll and so forth was part of that. We also have some other items looping, some discussion on how we divide loops and things like that, which will be coming through this committee. I don't have anything for you today. It being our June meeting, I just wanted to, to begin to have this on the agenda item, agenda for discussion.
That's a great idea.
And I really have nothing to report for the executive director's report. I think we've completed the budget. We've completed the LCAP this month and ended the year with a great graduation and sense of joy of, and knowing that we are moving back to onsite next year. So don't have a lot to report there right now.
Great, so that then takes us to the end of our meeting. Note, this is the budget meeting that took less than an hour. For those of you who weren't here for last year's budget meeting or the year before, or the year before that, I think it was a series of meetings that each lasted three to four hours apiece. So a good year to be able to.
I'm very proud of us. Not that we did a whole lot of budgeting. I'm very proud of Jim. We will give Jim all the applause for this year's budget.
Susan.
Susan, Susan and Jim. I will go Susan and Jim. We'll just pass the applause all the way to Susan.
It's a testament to the, to the fiscal health of our school. To be able to just review and approve the presented budget and not be in a position where we're having pennies trying to get to the weeds. So great work and thank you, Susan and team. Jim, for all of your, your work all along the way on this, to make it this easy today. So with that, I have our next meeting on July 13th. At 4:15 PM.
Um, yeah.
Train coming back from Portland on July 13th, so I don't know if I can zoom on the train, the internet's not going to be that good.
So this is where you tell Nick.
Yeah.
There you go.
And I expect, correct me if I'm wrong, but July is often a month that we don't even have a meeting. So I expect that it should be a pretty short, sweet, just any, any updates kind of meeting. Is that no big serious things that we know of?
No, we don't expect any big serious things. We will more than likely have a finalized state budget by then, we should. So there might be an update. I expect there'll be an update on that. And, and then just our normal, like, this is what we spend to the month of June kind of approvals. That's about all I, I see happening in July.
Okay, so you're comfortable with missing?
Yeah, I'll text Nick. I mean, I'm, I'm going to miss it. It's
Yeah.
Sure. On a train, just that I'm zooming, well zooming. Sorry, I can't tell myself. With that, it doesn't, doesn't get any cheesier. So I'm just gonna adjourn this meeting.
Hi, everyone.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Susan, I'll see you in an hour.
Yeah, just about an hour and a half. Uh huh. Okay, bye-bye.